Can you hear me now? How about you talking? Can you talk? Are you saying words? I can't hear you at all. Maybe it's my phone. No. I'm gonna hang up. Yes. Yeah, I'm. Yeah, I'm getting off.
It's my permission. Yeah. That's there's the report. Here, what's this?
At the Citizen Advisory Committee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like that. Yeah, that seems like.
Oh, I was gonna log into that.
See how that comes. About that. All right. All right. You see officially starting. Right on that one. I'm firm that. Hey, I'm making an assumption though.
Okay, hello, it's Monday, May 10th, and I'm calling the Port of Olympia Commission Work Session to Order. We have not a packed house, but a house of some interested people and a former commissioner in the house. And he's open if anyone wants to add an agenda item about what's his fault. He said he's open for that.
Excellent.
Okay, so I would like to start with an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we have an agenda. This is a pretty informal meeting. I see that our former Commissioner Joe Downing has come up to take a seat at the table at my invitation, and I would like to also invite Quentin as our VAC member. We are not able to take any action with us, but we are going to have a discussion of the Waterfront Center, and there's no lawyer here to tell me no. Alex, does the Waterfront Center start with you?
It starts with Mike Reed.
Much.
Hi. For the record, I am. Are we? Do we record these? What's going? Okay, no protocol. This is my first work session back in this role. So. So for the record, I am Mike Reed. I am the Community and Economic Development Director. And I am bringing forward the conversation about the Waterfront Center. Seems like it's been some time since the Commission has had an opportunity to talk about this. And since last it was brought to the Commission, there has been advancements made, or we can work done. How about that? Let's see if I can go to the. Oh, we're at the last look. Okay. Am I now? Perfect. Okay, so what I want to do first is a little bit of discussion. Again, this was also an exercise for me to get up to speed because Waterfront Center was something that was brought forward while I was not working for the port. So I use this as an opportunity, frankly, to dig in as to what had been discussed and what had been done. And what I have found is there's a series of things that we know to be true in our current state, and there are some things that are still a bit of an unknown. And then I put forward some options potentially to move forward and how we could, how you could look at that. So what do we know to be true today? What we know is this conversation of the Waterfront Center was born out of Destination Waterfront efforts, which were also then born out of Vision 2050. Goal number three in Vision 2050 is actually called Destination Waterfront. So that is the sort of origin story of this specific effort. You can see goal number three, turn the Port Peninsula into a premier destination by adding attractions and increasing accessibility and maintaining a clean and safe environment. Then there was action item number 14 associated with with that, that was establish a waterfront task force to explore options and develop a marina-based destination concept that offers first-rate shopping and dining, recreation, public art and gathering spaces while ensuring connectivity with the existing downtown core. So there was an actual team put together called the Destination Waterfront Team. You all know this. You've had this briefing. I didn't know all of this work until I began. What happened then? Site D emerged as the first step associated with this. It looked like there was a concept of, hey, that is the site and the location that a port's administrative building would be located. So the project was initiated with a new port administrative office as the anchor tenant. So we knowing that we were going to invest in that site and that we were going to be the catalyst by locating ourselves is really what launched this destination center concept into orbit. Since that point, we have bought a building for an administrative center. So now the anchor tenant concept in Site D of this is no longer. In you knowing that this could happen in the last conversation that was brought to you about this, we had a contract with an architectural firm named EHDD, and I believe it was Commissioner Montana that said, hey, before we go farther down this road, could we take a look at the market study on this? Is there a market to have this building built with you or without you as a potential tenant in that building? That was a very wise move, and I'm going to summarize a copy of 196-page report that I forwarded to you, and the answer is. a copy of a hundred and ninety-six page report that I forwarded to you, and the answer is no. Uh, the answer to that was there is not a market, and it would not be justified to go build a spec building without an anchor tenant. So it goes, it says more things in there, Commissioner. Do you have some questions already?
No, we did good.
Okay, you did good. Uh, that was the smart move. Tap the brakes on that one. So there is a full uh length um market study report. I sent you the report. I also sent you a chat GPT summary of that report, so you don't have to read all hundred and ninety-six pages of it. But really, at the end of the day, it just, there's a couple of bigger points in there, but the big one is the market case right now to build uh to have the port play the role of building a spec building without us as a major anchor tenant is just not justified by the market, and it probably wouldn't be justified by the private sector either. They would look potentially want a an anchor tenant of some sort as well. So another couple of other things that we know to be true. We know that the marina, the Swan Town Marina's office building does need to be replaced at some point in time. Um, it is a forty-year-old manufactured building. So while we know that that we may not be the tenant of a full building uh with our administrative needs, we still could theoretically be a tenant in a in a smaller scale in a building on that site. Um, we also know the concepts of a, and it's been named a half a dozen different things over the years. But it's been a marina village, a waterfront center, a marina center, and other contemplated names. These are not new ideas. They go back over thirty years is the first time that that I can find references and images of these various things. See, we also know that consistently in all iterations of this concept, they have talked about trail access, a plaza of some sort or some sort of gathering space as a part of it. Uh, tourism or tourism-based uses as being a part of it. Boating and the connection to boating, the boat sales or things of that, or even boat repair is a potential use. Restaurant, gift shop, grocery, marina office, boat sales and water recreation. By water recreation, it means things like um uh kayak rental or something like that. Um, all of those uses have been consistently referenced across all of the conceptual plans for the last twenty-five, thirty years. So the first, the one that we're seeing now, this is, this is the latest that came from Destination Waterfront, or actually, this came from the Waterfront Center contract with EHDD. So they had a a a three-building sort of angled uh look there. Building along the trail, vehicular and pedestrian wayfinding aligned with dock entrances. So that was, uh, they looked at the campus as an ecosystem. So that was EHDD's. There's a rendering early on of what it could look like. This is the most, the this is the most current version. So this is two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five version of the concept. This is two thousand twenty-two version of the same concept. So this was done associated with Destination Waterfront. This was done by Thomas Architecture Studio. Three-building sort of concept along the trail, civic plaza, sort of, I think, located in um. I can't tell if that's a G, maybe a G. You can kind of see. And this is the, I think that's a two thousand three version. So you can see up, I don't think I have a.
Planted this multiple times.
You have.
It's not new.
It's not going to show up, but you can see upland there. There's a series of, there's actually, I think, in that one, there are four buildings, but a campus of buildings uh there that were a marine-related, marine-themed series of buildings.
We're going to be ready when the anchor tenant comes. No, we'll need to plan it again.
I couldn't help myself, but this is a continuation of the same same picture you can kind of see. Let me go back. So you can see this is up northern on the peninsula. This is southern. Uh, we still haven't finished this picture either, though. So we got the building that is the Boatworks building, but there's two buildings there. We only have one.
Wait, which is the one we have?
We have the one um on the right.
Closer to the water, the yellow one.
Yes. Um, but then those docks that you see there, those would be M, N, and O docks, an expansion. Those don't exist right now. You can see some upland development um and another sort of guest moorage dock. That that sort of building there was contemplated to be a restaurant at one point in time. Um, and then you can even see in the background, there's another building uh there with this weird sort of line cutting through it, going to it. That was, um, I believe that was Port Admin Offices back in the day.
It has an admin office.
It doesn't it? So this is, so this is, I want to say this is early two thousands. If I've not done, this is nineteen ninety-five. Um, uh, so you can see over here.
I'm kidding, thirty years.
I'm not kidding. This is, this is not a new conversation. Um, and so anybody who says that this just came out of the blue, it hasn't, it just hasn't come out of the blue. It's been around as a conversation point for for a long time. But you can see over on the left-hand side, it's pointing to a thing they called it Marina Village. Uh, it says um Marina Village Restaurant, um Marine Commercial, uh yacht club, marine-related F offices, public restrooms, marina office, maybe groceries and deli says there. So these concepts, they have, they have come up, they have emerged. So.
And they've been consistent in their application through each iterations. They're.
Pretty, yeah.
They're pretty, pretty similar.
Yeah, and I think part of that, the reason that they've all been similar in some fashion is there is this area, you can actually see um um there's a kind of a line there running north and south. There is an Army Corps of Engineers four oh four permit that was created to fill this land. And um that permit had stipulated requirements that the upland uses had to be marine-related water-dependent or water-related uses. And there's only so many marine-related water-dependent like uses, and that's why you've seen this consistency in concept over the last thirty years of, you know, nobody is talking about turning these into apartments because that's not consistent with that sort of use in this area. This is also, just so you know, has been folded into the city zoning and their shoreline master program or SMP uh as well. So these uses are also referenced, not only in our planning documents, but the city has now absorbed them into theirs as well.
These uses, including the grocery.
Yes, the sort of.
Restaurant.
Yep. Water depend, what we what we would typically call water-related or water-dependent uses.
So there's broad alignment over what we would like to see here, and there has been decades.
Been pretty consistent.
I have a question. I don't know if you, anyone here knows. We don't have our marina guy here, right?
No.
Um. Those of us who live here or play here, Austin Harbor Marina, we all know what it's like in the summers. It's
Oh, yeah.
Incredible center for community activity. There's a band most Friday, Saturday nights, um high demand, like more than it can accommodate. I think Swan Town, given its incredible location, certainly punches below its weight and sort of a broader asset like that. And so I was wondering if maybe moving forward, we can understand, are there any? Well, Swan Town is also publicly owned and, you know, has really decent rates. Are there other publicly-owned marinas who are kind of having more of these amenities cited there?
Um, I would, I would venture to guess it's a.
In Washington, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's just a matter of programming and building programming in that space. Um, while we don't do every Friday like they do, um, uh, we do have our nights at the move, you know, at the port, we have the the concert venue that we do.
They're all great. There's just a disconnect from the marina itself a little bit.
And yeah.
I mean, maybe Commissioner Downing could, as a voter, I mean, I get text messages from my boating friends all the time that say, here I am in Anna Cortis. Wow, what great amenities they have for, so I think. Yeah. From those dots.
I would say if you were guest mooring, coming right into there, also just just imagine the experience when you get off of your boat. There really isn't anything immediately there. You are walking, the only, I mean, the closest thing you've got is Hearthfire is a restaurant in one direction. Yes, there's a couple of bathrooms that can be used, but outside of that, there's no services catering to that community. Um, I would even say in some instances, we lack just the basic infrastructure. Uh, there's uh to to support things. So like when we do the South Sound Block Party, uh, we have, we have to bring in generators uh out there. So we are looking, um, we do have the Holbrook Building that was given back to the port that's out there. Ways to tap into water and power for better amenities out in that area and maybe even programming in that space. But your your point about can we do more programming? Absolutely. I do think that we we need more amenities to support it.
That's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. Um, so that that's just a super fast summary of what we know to be true today. There's a couple of things that we don't know, or maybe I don't. I I probably should have said, I don't know. Uh, because you might know the answer to them, and it's just a matter of me asking the questions and getting them out of you. But I don't know the answer to some of these. The first one is are you ready and interested in proceeding with an active recruitment for the development of Site D? What I mean by Site D goes back to this Destination Waterfront conversation going all the way back. That's the pink one right there. So when when we did Destination Waterfront, they broke um the shoreline up into certain pieces. Site D is the waterfront center site. It's also the same. I mean, again, it goes back thirty years. That's been that Site D is where we have had Marina Village, Marina Center, Waterfront Center. It's all been located in that site.
And when we approved this at the beginning, which was the three-member commission, we belabored the point of moving it potentially to a different site, and there was a lot of follow-up questions on whether we could move it to another site, and it can't be on another, at any of the other parcels because of the proximity to the marina. So the marina office itself has to be in that location for marina staff, and we went very far down the road on that.
So I, the first thing is, do you want to proceed with, hey, it's been talked about for thirty years. Let's figure out how to do something. And if that's the case, um, then there's a series of follow-along questions that I am, I'm going to put forward to you today, and we can figure out how we, how and when we want them answered. You can answer them today, or we could bring this forward. But uh, the first or that second question is, what role should the port play in this, in that, in that um Site D development? And what you're seeing here, they actually, that list there, groundless or uh, all the way to um building owner landlord. I actually have those ordered in terms of riskiness and expense and also potential revenue generation. So the lowest, um, the lowest cost, lowest risk, and frankly, probably the lowest return would just be your simple, hey, look, we're just going to offer the land out, well, just like the exact model that we have everywhere else, just like we do with the farmer's market, the market center building. We're just going to offer the property out to the marketplace. We just do the ground leasing. The building would be owned by someone else. The next model in that is um we be a tenant in the building. That's also a low-risk sort of scenario. Site developer moves up a notch in the sense that we would be putting in curbs, gutters, sidewalks, street trees. We would do maybe the site, the initial site planning. We would, we would do the, this is where the bathroom would need to go. This is where the public amenities would need to be and play a role, an active role in that. Here's your building pad, but everything else, parking lot, um, other amenities, we would site plan that out and potentially even do the improvements for those. Next, moving to builder, that is, we will construct the the vertical uh entity, the vertical structure on that site. Uh, and then moving to building owner and landlord. So we would build the building, we would lease out every space in that building and manage it as a traditional building man landlord. So there's a, there's a variation of roles that we could play in there depending upon the amount of capital that we want to invest, the amount of risk that we want to um uh take on and the amount of return that we potentially want to target. So, and we have played all of those roles in various projects throughout Port Property at various times. Third question, um, are there enough interested tenants to make a project viable? Well, what we did here, what we heard in the market study is unless you have tenants, potentially an anchor tenant, don't go build this thing and don't do the field of dreams model of build it and they will come. Um, find them, then build. Um, and first you have to figure out, is there enough of them to justify building? So another thing that we would want to know would be, are there uses that you want to restrict above and beyond the city's zoning or the Army for uh for permit? For example, housing. I can't recall whether or not the city's zoning allows housing or doesn't. The Army Corps um is absent. It's just non-vocal on housing. It doesn't exclude it, but it doesn't include it, which means if you, if we wanted to include it, we would need to do some work. I think some of that work has done, been done in the past, but you could figure out whether or not you want to have housing, or you could just say, you know what, it's too close to the marine terminal. We've experienced what problems when we put residential close to industrial and people complain, and so we're just gonna, I don't care if it's allowed or not, we're just going to restrict it. So that would be a thing that we would know, need to know to move forward. Also, then the next, are there uses that we may want to incentivize? Like, um, um, maybe we want to increase our role in tourism. And so we 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 may want to say, hey, we'd really like it if there were some vacation rental units in this, like short-term rentals, because we think that it would interplay very nicely with our marina, and it would be a value add to our marina to have, you know, vacation rentals in there. So we want to incentivize something like that in the deal. And that's just an example. There could be others. Uh, you, maybe you want to incentivize water-based recreation. Uh, we really, really want a kayak rental in this, and nobody's been able to figure it out out here, and it's probably because the market is so soft that it doesn't work. So maybe there there needs, we may need to play a role in incentivizing that piece. Uh, or uh, there's community-based organizations that we really want on this site. Um, and 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 we're going to incentivize how, in some way or another, we want this or that community-based organization or nonprofit to be a part of this. We're willing to incentivize it in some house. And then there's another question of, are there uses that you want to require? And I will, this is where I would throw myself on the sword for, please include Swan Town Marina Offices. Uh, they, in my opinion, I don't think that doing a transaction of any kind without getting a long-term permanent home for the Swan Town Marinas, uh, that, yeah, if we just didn't address that, we missed the the ball. Um. So those are some questions about the, you know, what you want to restrict and so on and so. Um, so from an options moving forward, uh, these are just three possibilities, and the three most logical possibilities that I would see. Um, and they have plus, all of them have pluses and minuses, and I want you to know that you have options right now. I have a recommendation I'll share with you. Um, but so there are really three models to take a piece of property like this forward right now if you wanted to. You could do just the for-lease model. Put the for-lease sign out on the property, work with a commercial broker and find a tenant to to lease that property. If you want to use that model, you have to have it pretty clearly dialed in of we know exactly what we want with this site. We know the terms that we want with this site because the broker is going to say, what's a winning deal look like? You need to know that or give me some idea as to what I'm targeting here. You would then, uh, in that model, you'd be letting the city zoning and regulations guide the uses and designs. Yes, you could still incorporate ours to a certain degree, but that's the framework ultimately for decision-making. And it's a sort of, let's make a deal model, like you're moving forward pretty quickly. Um, the next option down is an RFQ or Request for Qualifications or Request for Proposal Model. Um, you would use that when you want to see more of what the options could be. Um, also, um, when you, you, we, the port, want to set more of the parameters on the qualifications of the person doing the job, uh, the uses that we want to see in there and even potentially the design. So bring us a proposal for what you want to do, and we are going to score and grade it. Um, in that model, you have to be okay that this is, there's going to be some process with this one. Score, setting metrics for. Score, setting metrics for scoring and what's your submittal criteria and all of these sorts of things. I also wanna caution in some ways, RFQ and RFP are the terms that Public Works predominantly uses. So when you use them in a real estate model, you can get user conflict. Cause what will happen is when you issue an RFQ or an RFP in Public Works, you're gonna issue a contract. You are doing a deal. Uh, what can happen in this model is you put it out and you're like, oh, I don't really like any of them. And then you get people going, but you put this out for a proposal. I thought you were doing a deal. So it does create some confusion and some conflict out there. Um, I would say that if you're gonna use that RFQ, RFP model, you'd be using that in a period of time where you feel pretty confident that the market is strong and the time is now. Cause you don't wanna put an RFQ or an RFP out there in a super soft market and only get one or two responses and then feel pressured like, oh, we gotta, we gotta do one of these. So there's a little bit there. And then the last one is a solicitation of interest. And then the solicitation of interest is, you wanna know what, uh, uh, let me rewind and take back to RFQ, RFP. RFQ, RFP, just so you know, in this model that we would be contemplating, you would be targeting the builder developer. It would be hard to do an RFQ, RFP with individual users or tenants. Cause then you're gonna get, if you're gonna get a mishmash of how you would put the thing together. Um, so you'd be really targeting who's gonna build this thing in your RFP. In a solicitation of interest, you'd be wanting to go out there saying, I wanna know who all the potential interests could be, including tenants. I wanna know what nonprofits are interested in that space. I wanna know what community organizations, what restaurants. I wanna know the whole bag. And that could be anybody who just wants to lease space to somebody who wants to build the whole thing, you know, and the whole kit and caboodle on that thing. Um, you would also use a solicitation if you are not one hundred percent sure of the transactional model that you wanna use. So you could do, uh, um, you would use this if, hey, maybe there's a couple of pieces of this that we would build and maybe there'd be a couple of pieces that someone else would build. We don't know yet until we have all of the interests sort of shaped out and put together. So you would use the, the, the SOI when you're not one hundred percent certain and you're just gauging interest level. You'd also, um, it's also that sort of piece somewhere in between, we're, we're testing the water and we're a hundred percent certain. So it's more than a water test and less than we are issuing an award to someone, you know, whether or not the outcomes. Uh, and then finally, that last piece, it would be a, an SOI would be open to anybody, builders, developers and prospective tenants. So from a next step, the things that I would need is, what, what of those three models makes sense to you? I'm just gonna be honest, I am recommending an SOI model in, uh, you should have
That recommendation in? I thought you did.
I kinda felt like I did. Um, I also, in case you wanted to see it, I've, I, I have a draft or an example of what an SOI would look like. It's in front of you there. That is super rough draft. I started working on it over the weekend. So, uh, but just a lot of folks have not seen a solicitation of interest before. It's a new sort of term. I think folks are familiar with RFQs or RFPs. So I just wanted to give an example of what I'm looking at. It's a higher level document. We flesh it out more, again, super rough cut on that. Um, but to do it, we'd still need to define what are our must-haves, our nice-to-haves and our no-ways. Uh, we'd also need to define some submittal guidelines. And I would make recommendations on the submittal guidelines, like, you know, what is, wha- what is a qualif- what does it look like to be a qualified submittal? Um, because they need to have some P C amongst them for us to be able to work with them. Um, we'd also wanna be able to set a review process. What does it mean? Okay, so we get all these in, now what? Uh, and so we'd have to have some discussions on how we review and tabulate and figure out what to do next. And then there is a, the, the launch document, the actual published document that we would put out. It is an equal parts uh, marketing document, cause you're trying to get eyes on the thing. Um, also, it is an informational public awareness document that we're doing this. So it's a fi- you, we have to sort of finely craft it. Once it's done, then you launch. So that is the question, that's the presentation. Now it's, I will answer questions or you guys can discuss amongst yourself.
We'll say one threshold thing is, it's sort of, it's presuming that y'all wanna launch.
Yeah.
B is, don't launch and fold it into the master plan. Um, if, and that just wanted to say, that's an additional option. So.
Yeah, that is true.
Can you go back to question number one? Was, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Do you wanna proceed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say with the alternative.
Ever have anyone reach out about all this?
Yeah.
And we have there. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, the solicitation of interest is, is a, is a good idea and I, but I, I just can imagine we're not already getting some inquiries.
We do predominantly, um, and historically, it's been associated with a restaurant. So, uh, and even, you know, I was at WPPA uh, conference last week and had a commissioner of a different port who owns a restaurant approached me and say, I'd love to have a restaurant in that location. When you guys issue whatever it is that you issue, please put me on the list. So the restaurant happens, um,
And hotel.
We have had hotel. Hotel has been more in the north point side of things, but um, we did now that I think about it, I don't think that we've ever actually done uh, a real solicitation or marketing uh, of, of this Site D. Um, so we've had this idea out there for thirty years, but I don't think that there has been a really targeted marketed push for it. So everything that has come in, has come in, um, unsolicited. Yeah.
So, um, well, I guess, I, I guess I would say when, when we were, when we were gonna be the anchor tenant, I was, I was fully in favor of, uh, of proceeding here, but I mean, we're thirty years into this, so there's no need to rush. But I'm, um, I'm thinking, I, I'm just thinking now that because we're, we won't be the anchor tenant, I'm a little concerned that if we go out and look for somebody to develop this one specific spot, then how is that going to influence the entire, the, the whole master plan for the, for the peninsula over the, over the next, uh, whatever amount of time it takes, but um, yeah, I'm, I'm just, uh, now I guess I have more questions.
Uh, that's a fair question. I would say what makes this piece of parcel, this piece of property maybe a little different than some of the other parcels on the peninsula that we are looking at through that master planning lenses. This is the one parcel that I would argue has never changed in its consistency of vision of use. So, um, I could go through historical documents like, um, for example, um, this from nineteen ninety-five. Nineteen ninety-five was the year that we actually created, uh, it was nineteen ninety-three through nineteen ninety-five, the strategic planning, compe- comprehensive planning that was done to create the districts as we know them today. But we've actually gotten rid of certain districts. You can see up, um, along kind of Marine Drive. There's those boxes, ones in L shape and one's just a perfect rectangle and there's one north of it. Those don't exist. Because at one point in time, that was called the Central District, which does, which no longer exists. It got absorbed into the Marine Terminal. So we have, so boundaries for the Marine Terminal. Also, you can even see, uh, up at the north there, there's little shapes of boats there. That was a district called the Admiralty District. That no longer exists either. So we have had things that we have not evaluated, um, uh, in a very long time. Or the evaluation has changed. This one has never changed. And in fact, I would even say your most recent work with EHDD really strongly confirmed what you've been holding to be true about how the right way to use this property, um, all along. So I, we could wait. Um, I would be stunned sideways if, um, the vision changed. I mean, just pri- primarily just because the consistency of time. It hasn't changed in the last thirty years. So, but it's a fair
Yeah.
Fair, fair, fair question to ask.
And then I, one last comment, I think is that we, we have to remember that even if we, even if we put it out for solicitation of interest or an RFP, RFQ, we will still be liable, I guess, for, responsible for, um, because there's gonna be extra costs in developing this property with the sea level rise requirements that we've, uh, and, and, you know, rightly so, we've gotta take care of that. Um, some of the, uh, um, the potential contamination that is, might be in the site and how, how that gets taken care of. So we're still gonna be, uh, um, responsible for quite a lot of that, but other than, I just wanted to make that comment.
I just wanted to ask about how the Marina Office fits into this solic- solicitation of interest. Do you think that, and it would build that or?
Uh, well, this Um, that's a great question and it's the question that I think that we actually have some unique flexibility. And it's where, um, couldn't tell you today what the right sort of transactional document may look like. Cause I think that if we're flexible, um, with that space as a potential tenant, it gives us some ability to maneuver, put together a deal. So you could say, hey, you have to lease this pad from us and that pad, the whole thing is gonna cost X amount. But we're going to also then be exchanging, we need space in the building. Um, and so the, what they're paying us for rent, we're offsetting by rent in the building. So there is this flexibility from a financial standpoint on the give and take between the potential parties. And that could manifest itself in some of the stuff that Commissioner Ile is talking about. There may be things that we need to address. And so I think that when we get to a point where this maybe looks a little bit realer, we've got a dance partner that we wanna, we wanna work with, we're gonna start with our side of the sheet of, alright, here's everything that we're willing to offer into a deal. We're, we're gonna need to be a tenant in the building. We're willing to contribute certain amount of funds to address, um, you know, birmingham in certain areas or the raising of the, of the, uh, trail in certain areas or whatever. There's things that are important to us that they may not think is important and we're going to, we'll cover some of those costs. It was back to that question about, are there certain things that we wanna incentivize? So I, I think that, um, building out that list of what we need and what we want will help us and it will, um, it'll inform the kinds of transaction that we ultimately So.
Yeah, that's really critical. Yeah, that definitely helps. I think it's just really important that we're looking into are, are costs exceeding what we're putting into it and, or what we're getting out of it, I should say, and mission over margin, you know, I, I do agree, we should continue to develop Site D and come with, come up with a plan for it based on, you know, the precedent of thirty years. But we need to do that concurrently with our current planning of our master plan.
Can I ask one more question? Um, so related to the marina and the facility that they need right away, um, and if, whether it's, uh, a, a different modular or, or if it's incorporated into, uh, the new building. Um, so the marina, uh, and I'm look, I was looking at their financials before I came and, and I, I didn't dig deep enough to find out, uh, what their, uh, their charge, one of their expenses, one of their maintenance expenses is facility rental, which is almost twenty thousand a quarter. Uh, what do we, you know?
I think that may be one building that they, we rent a bay there for our maintenance, but like equipment.
Oh, okay.
And that will move into
That'll move into dance and goats. We, we will eliminate that.
Okay.
But that's
Cause I would, yeah, I was, cause I was just kinda wondering and, cause there, you know, if, even if with a new facility, the marina is gonna have to be, uh, there's gonna have to be a certain expense that, uh, would be allocated to them for that.
Yeah, uh, it's a, oh, I would also just sort of add on to that. The, there are internal conversations right now about, um, w- we know that the Swan Town Marina Office Building is significantly past its useful life. It is a over forty-year-old manufactured building that at various times has not received the right sort of maintenance. So there are conversations. I think knowing the answer to this helps inform which way to go. So we, we have a slate of potentials on everything from, can we move a prefabricated building onto that site? So there, just get them out of that building. Can we rent or lease a manufactured trailer of some sort for a period of time? Or, um, or do we move to this model where it's just, hey, let's just go straight to building? So.
Mr. Seifer?
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm, I was reading. Uh, you want me to go? Um, can you go back to your questions?
Isn't it as a
I have a lot of words, yeah.
Have to wait.
No, you don't have to, but that's So, uh, I believe that the commission should proceed because we, just since I've been here, allocated significant amount of money. We had a grant to work with the estuary among planning. We allocated a significant amount of money ourselves and the conditions have not changed. It's always been in front of the master plan. It's the only location for the, for the Marina Office. I think that the benefits that that has from a tourism perspective are massive. Um, and the cat, it being a catalyst project for the whole peninsula has been consistent throughout all of these studies and nothing has changed. Um, I think what role the port should play should be on the less risk end. Um, one of my the reason I voted no against the waterfront center building when we voted for it was because I didn't think, I thought it was too expensive for us to build, um, and for us to occupy. And that hasn't changed either. Um, it would be very expensive for us to build the building and we would not recapture that in market rents, in my opinion. So grandly, ground lease only, s- something on the RFP, RFQ, SOI side of things would be my strong bias. I think it's way too much risk given construction cost, market conditions, et cetera, for us to take on more responsibility. I think we should definitely make it a requirement that there is a certain, s- certain, um, portion of the building that is, uh, reserved for the Marina Office. We need to figure out what that looks like because there's a lot of feedback that we need a public space there as well. It does that work, um, you know, k- k- from a cost perspective, I like your idea of underwriting the cost of the space by subsidizing the land lease, you know, some, some sort of swap there. One of the things we saw on our tour of Bellingham was a public park that was paid for by the private developer. So it is accessible to the public, but ma- managed and paid for by the person who owns that building. I would like to see something more like that, like we go to the private sector and we say, here's what consistently we know that our community wants. It's in all of, it's, you listed them off, like all of those things, access and, and figure out what's actually feasible and then have them write that into their costs of their building. Um, it's from a market perspective, I think a restaurant is the most likely anchor tenant. I, I have concerns on whether the solicitation of interest captures, like, does that accomplish anything? Because the restaurant users aren't sophisticated public process people who are like looking at these things and filling them out. And so are you better off just to go to a straight RFP, RFQ and have the developer, they're not gonna build spec. They're just probably not. So they're, they have to go do their own legwork of finding that anchor tenant. Some way of like being more clear on what, I'm just not sure what the solicitation of interest, like, is it just process for process and do we actually accomplish anything? I'm not sure, because I don't know that the right people are gonna fill it out. Um,
Can I build on that before you go on?
Yeah.
So in, could you address that? Because I had the vision that developers would respond, but restaurants would also say, hey, build it and I wanna be a tenant. Is that true?
It would be, I, I think it would be rare that you would see, um, a, a restaurant respond to a full-blown RFQ art.
Right.
As an individual user. I do think that you can craft an SOI, uh, that, that, I mean, I know of probably four or five restaurants that I would get that in I do think that you can craft an SOI uh that, that, I mean, I know of probably four or five restaurants that I would get that in front of because they have articulated historically. Um, I, I, the, the reason also that I think that the SOI would want to explore some degree of it, or maybe even it's just a very truncated thing. There are folks that are actively knocking on our door and have knocked on the door in the past that are from a community standpoint, estuarium, uh, community sailing. Uh, if, if we go to the developer and say, you just fill it with the tenants that you want, um, the, then those, those users, I don't know if the, if the phone is ever answered. Um, so if you, a- and that's a choice. I mean, w- we've absolutely, I mean, East Bay is the example, we just put an RFQ RFP out there and said, hey, here's the parameters of what we kind of like want it to look and feel like, but who resides in your building? That is not, w- we do not play in that space. So um, but uh, in an SOI, w- you, we may do uh that outreach and go, oh, shoot. There is somebody who, it is important that, that we put them into this space and maybe we want to find a way to justify it. Maybe you don't want to do that, and that's, that's, that's a fair piece too.
And my experience is that the private sector, the public sector sometimes over dictates what it wants from the private sector and then nothing happens. So if there are particular uses that we don't want, like you can do CCNRs that say, no nail salons, because we just don't think that is what, but, but just as an example, maybe a nail salon would be good, I'm not saying it wouldn't, but lots of CCNRs say lots of things, and so we could, I, I just don't want to over prescribe to the private sector what to do, because the, what we've run into with the nonprofits is we, we have a desire there, but we haven't been able to make it pencil, like, so then nothing happens again. So like, if, why are we doing that exercise again if we're just gonna end up in the same place? Why not have the developer answer that question as to whether it makes economic sense? And if there's things we want subsidized, then have that be part of our package. Um, my other notes, I, I am not, I am not in favor of housing there. Um, I think that we have other land that is more compatible with housing, that's lower hanging fruit along state, and we can continue to be a part of affordable housing, workforce housing, any kind of housing that we want in more appropriate areas. So I would want that to be a condition because, again, from a market perspective, housing would be one of the highest and best uses from a who will pay to the most, because that's just the market right now, um, so I would exclude that. Um, will you go to the next slide? Um, yeah, and it's not that I'm opposed to, I get what you're saying about softening the RFP or RFQ. I just don't want to do a process for the sake of process that doesn't even attract the interest of the person who's gonna brass tacks, get the, build the thing. Like, if the developer can't, I don't, it doesn't matter who's interested if it doesn't make sense. Like, and so i- if that were shorter and like you were reaching out to the people that you already, you know, you put it out so that there was a public facing process and you touched base with all those entities and said, hey, we're gonna go. Like, if you're interested, we need to know because we're gonna pass this on to the RFP RFQ process, here's a list of people that might be interested. Like, that's cool, but I don't want to do like a sick, planning to plan is part of why there's fourteen iterations of this and nothing's happened.
Uh, I, I, I think that the way you could do that is you would issue an RFQ RFP with uh an addendum that is a solicitation of interest, that is, I am not the builder to this, but when it gets built, please give my name to the developer.
Yeah.
Here's what I am, here's how much space I am looking for, here's my background and my bona fides, please pass along.
Yeah.
So we could collect that.
And I think there's more work to do as a commission, if, if we do go this route, and I did bring this up because I was like, what, what are we do? We need to at least answer the question, and if everyone decides we should wait, that's fine, if everyone decides we should move forward, that's fine. Um, but I think that the commission needs to have some further discussion about like the, the structure of it, like, we must have an outdoor space that fifty people can stand in, and that's gonna be a requirement of this developer, if that is the direction that we go. Go ahead.
Well, I find myself um liking uh my, your core recommendation of the solicitation of interest. And I think it's because I find myself sort of between Commissioner aisle and Commissioner Harding when I think about this project. So Commissioner aisle pointed out, well, it's been a long time, why would be, be in a rush now? Commissioner Harding's like, oh, my gosh. My opportunity, and for me, the solicitation of interest allows us to test the waters. I am not in, this is publicly owned waterfront land, I'm not in a rush to just put anything there for the sake of the private sector being able to develop it. But if we've got the right partners ready to come forward, boy, would it be nice to activate the downtown Olympia waterfront. So for me, your recommendation, Mike, of the solicitation of interest kind of carves out that middle ground the way I'd like to see it carved out. I did come in here knowing we had the agenda setting and thinking, I really want to push forward that conversation about the small waterfront, small craft, based on what we've heard from other communities, you know, that this lack, other community members here who come to us individually. Um, and that idea of the public park, I really would like to see a solicitation, I want a thumb on the scale, not fully private sector, whatever the developer wants, because I really want to see that if there's a restaurant, there's also some food service that's accessible on a more casual level. You know, whether or not that's the most profitable outcome, I want to see some egalitarian openness at our public known Marina. Doesn't mean you can't have also a fine dining, where I'm from in New Jersey, but they typically have the fancy and then they had the fish and chipsery, and, and they both served a really important purpose. And I, I, there, so I do have not specifics of how they designed the building, but specifics of the outcomes I want to see for the community, that I think we could at least get a sense of the possibilities with the solicitation of interest. Once we did, we would activate the community that wants to see that here. Of course, the people who want it to all be open space, and so we'd be able to have a little bit more um, people understanding where we're headed. So for me, I like the solicitation of interest, I like the list of things that we're looking to have. I like the idea of not stumbling indefinitely, and if other, if private money's gonna come in such that we could move forward with this without compromising our sediment cleanup and all of our other priorities, I think that would be incredible for the city of Olympia. How should we proceed, given the perspective you're here today?
Uh, uh, a couple of thoughts sort of come to mind. I will tell you, unless there has been a full sea change in my ability or inability to read um, uh, sort of tea leaves, the city of Olympia, um, you know, have, having worn recently the economic development director hat over there. They are dying to see this organization do something with this property.
As is Experience Olympia and Beyond, their destination master plan is countywide, very clear, please.
Yeah, so there, the, 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 the do nothing uh approach is uh the, in my opinion, the last option. Um, uh, I think that um, I think that there's ways that this can be done that is consistent with the, the master planning effort, I think that what we would be saying is, yes, we're moving forward with our full master planning effort, but this space, we feel kind of like the side, the side guards are already on this, this section of the waterfront. We, we're, we're just gonna continue to move this, this piece forward. I think that there's a way that, that we can marry that together. Um, uh, we'll be meeting with TRPC shortly to sort of frame out the full master, the, the peninsula master planning project now that TRPC uh, and that agreement has, has come, uh, oh, we did the advisory.
It will be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So our intention is to use TRPC on the peninsula planning. So I think, I think that we can very realistically manage the, the, any concerns there and be able to move with a concurrent track. I, I don't feel that, that we have to fully have the, the master plan completed before we can initiate this.
And so with the solicitation of interest, we're not looking at a huge allocation of funds, we're looking at some staff time.
Yeah.
Is that Commissioner aisle something that you would support as like a step without, and then reevaluating? Or is that feel like too much at this point?
Uh, no, that's not too much.
And question on that, would it be just the staff reviewing this lis- solicitation of interest responses, or would that be a commission work session?
That's a, I would want to do a work session on that. I think the, the best way to do it, unless there's like a thousand, I mean, like, I'm gonna be facetious here. But um, you know, unless it's a really massive volume and we've got, and, and there's obvious ones that are just way out left field. Uh, m- my take is to show you everything that comes in uh, and, and do some, maybe some pre-synthesizing, so it's a little bit more uh digestible. I think on a solicitation of interest and even the drafty one that I put in front of you, I still think that that's too technical. Uh, I think it, that what you're looking for in a solicitation of interest is, is, is really, hey, we are, we are, are, are you serious? Cause we are serious. And, and who, 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 who wants to be in this sort of, and we would push it, we push it out hard. And um, trying to get some feedback and then we would present it to, to the commission as to, this is what it, this is what came in. Now, what you could do with that is, okay, um, now we have all of these responses the commission has reviewed, you could give direction as to try to put together a deal, a targeted deal between these folks first, like you could bisect the whole RFQ process if you go, hey, look, we got fifty uh, uh solicitations of interest and we, we want to see if a deal can be put together with this body of these.
Or if we get two, then that's an indicator as well.
The market isn't there.
And I, I really think it's critical that this has more financial direction, because everyone's interested for free or for subsidized rent. These are gonna be fifty dollars a square foot, the end, like, to lease.
Yeah.
Like, they're, they're literally gonna be top of the market, there's no other way for them not to be. So are you interested at those rates?
Also building in some kind of public community.
A hundred percent. So like, and if it is like, you want to be the subsidized nonprofit, check here, or you want to be the, the market driven, but like, we can't just pr- continue to pretend that it's gonna be half as much as it is, because that's
Wouldn't our solicitation be for the business partners, the actual investor side, and we would, we would be prescribing sort of the additional pieces we wanted to make this, I see you wrote perspect- prospective tenants.
Did I say prospective? Perspective?
Um, a lot of perspectives.
A lot of perspective.
And that's to make Commissioner Harding's point, I understand she doesn't want just tenants with perspectives.
Yes. Um, I, uh, I think you've got to make it open to builders, develop, I mean, you, uh, the dream scenario, sometimes you just gotta will it out there into the universe, is you put a solicitation of interest out there and you get a couple of folks that actually have the chops to do the whole thing, to build the whole thing, and they're gonna use your interest list of, of the tenants to try to populate the buildings.
And, and I guess what I'm hearing you say is the reason we're doing the solicitation of interest is more about the tenants. Like, and so if that's the case, we need to have a brass tacks, financial conversation, otherwise we continue to get, yeah, that'd be great, like,
Oh, yeah.
Which isn't helping anyone. Do you disagree with that?
I don't disagree with that, and I'll, I will tell you that um, if you put a solicitation of interest out right now, you will have more, you will have a half a dozen responses that will say, uh, the port should subsidize my rent. And in some instances, we do not have the justification to do that legally, like, there has to be some sort of uh, um, statutory reason for us to be able to do that. We can't just willy-nilly go, you get to pay fifty percent and you get to pay a hundred percent. Um, even if you have a great community facing mission.
Right.
Uh, that's not how the statute works for us, everybody has to pay fair market value.
And we could make a decision as a commission, could we not, that what we want to provide to the community are some of these physical amenities, the plaza, the, even, and possibly the Marina grocery store, like, the, things that are necessary incidents to really thriving Marina, but not broaden it beyond that in terms of what we're soliciting.
One of the things that came up in Experience Olympia and Beyond was a made here store that was also a visitor center that was run by the visitor and by Experience Olympia and Beyond, like, that'd be an example of, it has all these local Thurston County things, and it's a visitor, and it, I mean, subsidize the rent of that.
Uh, I, I, I would actually say that I've, I've, I've had my uh, my opinion change. I actually do think now, sort of listening to where you're at with, I, I actually think you can go to a request, the, the RFQ with a sort of an addendum. Uh, the first thing you have to have is can someone physically build this? Cause the other turn, the other issue may be, you do the solicitation of interest, you get a bunch of interested parties that want to be tenants, and not enough qualified folks to be able to build.
But that's why, can't we, can't we do it, oh, but can't we open a solicitation of interest to the builders and developers?
Yeah, I would imagine you would. You'd have it open to everybody, last line, we want something that is open to builders, developers, and.
Can you take the feedback that you got from the group and essentially come back to us with a proposal? Cause you just like, didn't have much time on this, and you, you had, you didn't have answers to the fundamental questions when you were, right? So could you, it could be a solicitation of interest, it could be whatever, but.
Yeah, well, I can try, the, the, there's a couple of pieces that still need more work on my part. Um, that, there is the transaction cost, uh, and the sort of reality of the transaction cost. So, and it is in the, there is information in the market study, it does talk about, this is what rents cost in this area. Um, if someone is building this, be it us or the private sector, there is a certain amount of rent that you have to charge to be able to pay back the lender who gave you the money to build the thing. So um, uh, that's just a reality. I, I, I am a little concerned that that piece from the private sector standpoint is the hardest sort of nut to crack on this thing. The max that these buildings can be is three-story buildings, there isn't as much space out, out there as you would think. The more um, uh, requirements that we have for you build the park or you improve the trail, the, the more borrowed money that they're have, the, the, having to put in, and the, the more the deal just gets funky, and then the more they have to charge in rent. So I love the idea of, we want a high-scale restaurant and low-scale restaurant. What if building this thing comes out in the wash and I can't afford to put in low-scale restaurant? I don't know that answer right now. Um, but there will be, there'll be a price point that will need to be accomplished.
And then can you look at like, kind of some of the stuff we've been talking about in town water where maybe it's, maybe it's structured differently where their land lease, uh, there's a reduction, but they are managing the park, but we are subsidizing the cost of it, do you know what I mean? So maybe there's a way of the accounting, so that you aren't, a burden on the developer.
There are ways that we can le- that we can legitimately reduce some of that cost to the development side. So um, the, the addition of public amenities is one of those.
Well, I would just say, as you take this and come back to us with further recommendations, that when we put the waterfront center on ice, it was a combination of superpowers at our commission. So uh, Commissioner Montana had the ultimate solution, Amy was the one who pointed out um, how much this is gonna be per square foot. And for me, I was uncomfortable hiring this out to a consultant to tell us what we were doing. And I'm bringing that back because the more you move to an RFP that's like, well, just let's see whatever the market can do, the more, first of all, today I'm thrilled because we see what, having a staff member inside to help guide us and understand the process and the opportunities, this is what we need. We now have, I think, a functioning staff, I do, so my staff readiness issue is resolved in terms of moving forward. But as you thread the needle between these two opportunities, I really, for me, simple activation by bringing another high-end building is not enough um, for, for giving away another chunk of our public waterfront for another eighty years. Panatoni has left a bad taste in my mouth, and so I just want to make sure Panatoni wouldn't have if certain things had been built in. That, that's, that's a bottom line, and it, it's not, we could go forward a year later and you'd say, well, the market didn't pencil us, let's go forward with this big building, and I would say, absolutely not. And so let's figure out how to build it in upfront.
And I think the only thing I would add on to that is, the market for the market for industrial land is so different than the market for retail land in downtown Olympia, that you may just continue to get nothing. If, like, and so that's where we just have to consider that, and that might be a good choice. Um, but just recognizing that, that if we do squeeze the funnel too small, we just will wait, which is reasonable, a reasonable choice, um, but knowing that that's what you're doing by making the funnel so small.
And we can find the perfect middle.
Totally.
Romantic opportunities, and then having our community mission of building public spaces for.
We have former Commissioner, uh, extraordinary Joe Downing.
Well, I'm such, such a, thank you. I'm such a rule follower. I hesitate to speak, cause this is a work session. I know the public does not speak a work session, so can I be like an expert witness for? Expert witness, because I am a voter, and I visit a lot of marinas, and we plan to visit a lot of marinas this summer, so I second send you feedback on, I mean, I can list my five favorites already, Nanaimo, Kingston, Port Townsend, and why are those so great? Because you wanna be great, because you've already got an eight-hundred slut Marina, so maybe I can send you some feedback.
Joe Downing, would you meet with Quentin afterwards and fi- figure out a way that you can be anointed by the Pocac also to? Be part of that.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanna say is, uh, which is definitely overstepping, which is that, because of my history, uh, as a port commissioner for eight years, and I've been through some of these discussions and so forth with Commissioner Evans Harding, um, and Commissioner I L, and then before that, and I've lived through two prior, uh, executive directors, and, uh, you know, I remember when, uh, was Ed Gallagher came to us and, us individually really, and talked about getting involved in the Craft Center, that thing in the corner of town, is that what it's called? On a town water, you know, and, and that was an opportunity missed, and, and that's turned in that great by all appearances, but I wanted to say this about the, uh, the SOI, is that, I'm thinking about four different things going on, on the peninsula, um. And so maybe you wanna just put it out there for several parcels, which is, K G, apparently you guys own the K G Y building now. And secondly, you know, there's, over the years, there's been a lot of talk about a boutique hotel out there, and the parcel next to the radio station, then there's this parcel, then there's, this is radical, you know, but I can see from one of Mike's, uh, diagrams that Marine Terminal footprint has changed in the past. And so, what's, what's missing is a development of technology, uh, Perth Four, Perth Four, is that Perth Four? The one that's got all the dead pylons and everything, which used to be, which the sailing folks envy that parcel. And, you know, perhaps the Marine Terminal fence can be moved, so anyway.
That's all part of this master planning that we launched, so what we're talking about is whether this parcel's ready to move forward in advance of the bigger, all of those others will be part of that consideration.
So anyway, uh, but I, I'll send you some feedback this summer as I travel, and what makes a great town next to or Marina, uh, you know, amenities.
Yeah, I think this is a great discussion. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, the history that Mike showed us, I think is very informative, and, you know, the question I would have, you know, is, I mean, this discussion's occurred over the last thirty years, we've probably been in, you know, there's probably been meetings like this. Uh, so, how do you prevent yourself from falling into the same trap that occurred previously? Um, you know, I think a solicitation of interest is, you know, a good idea, but maybe it's, uh, if it's followed up by an RF, RFP right away, I think that's really important.
Yeah.
If you go after, for big, you need, really need to know what, what you want. Um, one of the things that Commissioner I L said was, are there any costs associated with this that we're gonna bear, no matter what? I think that's a really important point, because we, we need, you know, you need to know that number. Need to know that, really, down to the penny, before you do any of this. Because if those are costs that you're gonna incur, you're gonna have to put that into capital budget process, make sure you do it. So, um, I, I think that was very, uh, very helpful to hear that. Uh, you know, we all went to Bellingham, uh, you know, I think we've all seen what can be done. Uh, so I, I, I'm very encouraged by this conversation, I think it's a good one.
Thank you. I have one technical question for staff to consider, which is, can we start moving this forward without having adopted it into our comprehensive scheme for harbor improvements? Um, some level of the.
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
Okay, and what specifically?
Um, so the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements does have the existing layout map of the peninsula, and it has the districts that we've got already identified. And so the district that this property is in is Swan Town District, and all of the uses that we've already contemplated are already consistent. And I would even say, I'd have to go back and officially double-check, but I, we, we did a, in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-four, ninety-five, we did an, um, an EIS on this plan. And so we did an EIS on a Marina Village on this property already, or hasn't changed. So, um, so I think that everything from a. Yeah, from a planning standpoint, I think everything is, is already in place. And the biggest thing that has to be in place, it actually, it's, it's not even ours. It's the city's. It has to be consi- consistent with the city's comprehensive plan zoning and shoreline master program. Which I would say, everything that we've talked about and contemplated is, is consistent.
Are we ready to, for now? So we'll ask you to come back to us, can you come back to us within a month?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
So, just, uh, we can do, I guess we have three options for that, you could come back, um, and you, how long will it take?
I think I can develop a recommendation in a month.
So maybe at the June work session then, come back with a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I do think that you need, does someone have their speaker on? Is it? No? Okay. Sorry, there's like an echo back there. Uh, further direction from.
Sorry, just saying.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um.
Watching this.
I wanna make sure that the commission's intent is honored, so, like, the comments you're making about the restaurant, different, like, how do we, how do we make sure that you're getting clear feedback from the five of us on what does or doesn't work in this, so that we don't set ourselves up to say, do anything, and then we're like, except not this or not this.
That's a great, that's a great question. So, so, um, I've had to do this before, the, the best way to do this is to create some policy statements or broad-level project statements, vision-like statements. Um, and, uh, you want them to be clear and, and pretty concise, and you don't want fifteen of them. You want four, maybe five of them, but concepts or, or, or policy statements like, um, it is critically important that the site is accessible to everyone, and by that we mean from a price point to, uh, to an access point. Um, you know, I hear that concept of, I don't want something that is only usable or valuable to people at the highest echelon of, 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 of sort of social access or monetary access. So, that we would put into the, whatever document that we end up using, an SOI or an RFQ, hey, these are the five policy statements. I wanna go back over the tape and listen to this meeting, and kind of dig out where I think you're at. I've also gotten to know you, uh, a little bit, and I, I, I'm starting to understand your values. So, let me concoct, uh, up, uh, out of this conversation, a couple of value statements that would go along with this project. Um, I would take those back to you, I would take sort of the, the, the process document that we'd wanna go forward with, and a recommendation on how to do that. That's what I would like to do at a next work session.
I just want, I just think it's nuanced, and otherwise you're gonna get into like, well, Amy thinks you should have a helicopter pad on, and Jasmine thinks you should, like, and that's what I don't want to happen to you or the process.
I don't think it's gonna happen, Commissioner Harding, um, because my concerns, I have examples, but they're not prescriptive.
Yeah.
He, and he'll understand that. I think the key thing is, I really think we should only move forward if we have consensus on the commission. Of, of course, we only need three votes, but given that things are changing, we're gonna do this if we have an enduring consensus, so that we can really keep it going.
Yes. And that will tell the marketplace to, like, going out for a project like this on a three-two vote only tells the market, and there's this much wiggle room for the whole thing to implode. So it is important to try to get as much consensus as you possibly can early on. But let me, let me synthesize everything that I heard today, bring something back to you. I think I can, I think I can thread that needle.
Ask ChatDPT.
Can I ask, would it be useful when you, if you came up with value statements, thanks to send in the commissioners for some initial feedback, and then consolidate the feedback, and then bring all of it, feedback to the?
Yeah, I don't.
Session or no?
I, I am happy to work with you individually as well.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, uh, I don't want to use the commission's time to do redlining.
Correct. We do have a waterfront subcommittee, that's me and Amy Harding. I suggest you use that subcommittee, um.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That, and I'll share my thoughts with my one-on-one with Alex.
There you go. And I can hop in on those one-on-ones, if needed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, I feel like I have direction to, to be able to get you something further to contemplate.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right.
Um. Very short paragraph.
Oh, sure.
In addition to the award-winning Marina, the Swan Town District offers development opportunities related office, retail, and services to support the boating industry. Vision for the district is a cluster of marine-related activities highlighted by the Port Swan Town Marina and Bulwark's operations. Development opportunities include a marine village for multiple marine retail. And service providers, the district provides public access to the waterfront with the Billy Frank Junior waterfront trail and several pocket parts. And then within the development section itself, it states the ports anticipates that the Marine District will see additional buildings in the planning and preliminary engineering phases with construction to begin within the next five years.
Well, it's consistent with our comprehensive scheme. I don't see any.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Now, this one, I'm curious about our next conversation, commission meeting protocols.
Yes, well, um, I, we are, have been following up on some suggestions for, um, how we do some things slightly differently in commission meetings. And this, um, thing that says March twenty-sixth test webinar, is we are, um, trying to be responsive to a suggestion that we have people who want, who are going to participate in commission meetings online, members of the public. Um, sign up in advance if they wanna give public comment, and so we close off the signup just before the commission meeting, then we wouldn't entertain people who just sort of put their hands in the middle of the commission meetings. And so, this, um, page is what the form, uh, could look like. Um, and is it a page you wish to provide public comment during the meeting? Have you shared public comment in the last thirty days? And that can help prioritize comments, if you haven't, uh, participated more recently. Uh, definitely identify the topic you will be discussing. Um, and then, yeah, just help pronounce, you know, all that good stuff. And so, just wanted to check with the commission, is that something that you think would be good for us to pursue?
Is this similar to what they do at the county?
And the city.
Yeah, the similar form.
Yeah. We can also change the form, we can have the control over what the questions are that we ask of the public.
Okay, with me speaking, I cheer. I, I wanna first just thank you, because I've been asking for something that better integrates now that we have a hybrid protocol to our meetings. So when you come in, you see who's sitting there, you know who's in the room, but we don't always know who's tuned in, and especially if they have a phone number and their, their, um, cameras off, and it's very, it's part of, I think, the purpose of our meetings, to kind of know who's showing up and their names and, and what their concerns are. So this helps with a hybrid meeting, it helps the people who are managing the meeting, right now, me and Maggie, and in the future, whoever is, helps us know also how we're, um, allocating time, whether we have to ever cut shorter than three minutes, um, or how we're going to manage other parts of the agenda. So, I appreciate this as a step forward. I think I would also like to know, because we are in Thurston County, and I would, I, I've always wanna know where the person's from, just so I understand kind of the who I'm seeing from throughout the county, and I think it's part of our understanding equitably our communities across the county. So, that was the one piece that I think I don't see reflected here, because this is probably the city of Olympia model.
Yeah, it is.
Do you wanna know what city they're from in? Is that what they?
Yeah, or, yeah, or they're.
Yeah.
When, when you ta- when you sign in to testify for a state legislative meeting, you write your address.
Okay.
You, you, you do include an address.
And I think when there has been concerns at other jurisdictions, when people didn't wanna provide that, they conceded, because there was some free speech stuff, so, but I need to ask them for it, it's regrettable.
Yeah, this seems advantageous, just so we can plan for the meeting and make sure that everyone kind of gets a bite of the apple when we have so many public comments. I know there's been times as well where we've had it limited to the thirty minutes, and so I think the question of whether someone has spoken in the last thirty days, especially on the same topic, would be relevant if we're deciding. Though so far, we, I don't think we've ever had to turn people away, right? It's, it's.
Any other comments or feedback you need?
No, I don't think so. And I just also wanted to say another, uh, best practice, we're, um, hoping, so this one, we probably won't be able to implement it until the first meeting, but that will also give us time to sort of socialize it with the public, that this is a new way of doing things, and so we'll make sure we, uh, work with the communications team to do that. Um, but another one is, um, something you mentioned, Commissioner Vasavada, that right now, when we have the packet, it's and so, um, it's hard for people who are all interested in one topic to sift through and find that information. So we will be changing, I think as early as our next meeting, to having an agenda with hyperlinks to just materials for that particular topic.
That is wonderful, and I think that's a service to the community members who you know, be expected to put hours and hours in unless they really feel the want to. So, um, that should help.
Okay.
Great job.
And then I've got one last little, um, was a little bit of Alex's homemade efforts, but.
Um, what the heck?
No, no, Alex made, um, hand-colored charts.
Oh.
So, I know you're so excited by this, but we don't have a ton of time, so I will just highlight a couple of things and ask, um, for a little bit of feedback. So, the top is some scheduling needs we have from the commissioners, and really wanna sort of understand what, um, people's time limitations are in the next few months. But then the second page is our annual calendar. Um, and I have highlighted where there are mission meetings, where there are work sessions, they each have different colors. Um, the blue ones are WPPA seminars, the pink one is a WPPA commissioner seminar in July, so I wanted to highlight that for you all. And then we also have Pocac meetings on here as well. So, um, there are, uh, I heard a rumor, I'll just start with this, that Commissioner Vasavada, you may be unavailable for the month of July, is that true?
From July seventh through the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I don't think I wanna, well, it's, uh.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, cause what we, we'd like to do several retreats. One is to build out the five-year action plan, that's the second one, I think we're looking at June or July for that. Um, I guess early July, we do that. A second one is, one Commissioner I L noted, and I just wanted to take the commission's temperature on this, is before we get to building out next year's budget, doing a retreat or a half-day, I don't think it'd be a whole day, of kind of walking through current finances in that in-depth le- level that Commissioner I L indicated he was looking for, and have the business unit, um, leaders come in and talk about sort of current financials, what the constraints are, kind of explain them to you all, so you understand sort of where we are, before we come and ask you about where we wanna be in the next. That's something, hope sir, comes up with that in general.
Yes, I think that we have tried to do something similar at times, and there isn't a clearly crafted question, and so, um, I, I think we haven't been getting regular financials as a commission.
Yeah.
And we've had a lot of turnover, as we know, in our finance department. And so then it's, so, I think we would need to be clear on what the commission is seeking as the work product of that work session for it to be meaningful, um, because just having another update is not meaningful to, to me.
Right, right.
Like, um, I think that it's really what. Like, I think that it's really what Commissioner, I I don't want to speak for you, but we've both been asking and he can hang on to say if I'm, is analyzation of our financials, which we need regular financials to understand where we're at, but then what are the opportunities for improving? Like, where do we need to invest? Where we can generate more revenue? Where like, where are we not going to generate more revenue? Because this is just, we've, this is the what that business line is going to do, and this is a community service, and that's great. That that level of analyzation of when we're, when we're allocating funds in our budget, when we're spending money, we need to understand where that money's coming from in the long term and where our business lines can be improved.
Okay.
So if I could build on that, I would say for me, I really want a deeper dive into the Marina and the real estate aspects of our operations, because real estate seems to be underperforming. There's something I'm not understanding when I look at the rollup. And the Marina is where I think we really have a lot of of these nexus of these these things we're talking about. So what I wonder, and then Commissioner Iall, I get the sense that you really get a lot out of the deeply detailed information and you're seeing questions. And what would be helpful would be maybe if you could share with staff three of the questions, specific questions. And then maybe what we could do is, I would recommend, we start with one of these departments. I am interested in the Marina, but it can be whatever you you all want, so that we we have a trial run to to see that it's working and then roll it out as the quarterly, because I know how much preparation goes into these. And I know that we've missed the mark still every time, right?
Well, and and like, I agree with that, because the airport and the Marine Terminal, there isn't a nexus to commission-level community reflection, like, I mean, there is, that's an overstatement, but but like, the Marina may influence this building that we're talking about and the real, you know, like, so these are things that the communities, that we're representing the community where we may actually, there may be a nexus, whereas the airport needs to do its thing, but we're probably not going to have meaningful feedback on like what you should be charging. I I don't know. I I think there's less commission-level discussion with the Marine Terminal and the airport because of our expertise and maybe I'm.
Well, regardless, we have a new Marina person who has now six months at least under his belt. We ought to be able to have some
Brass tax conversations.
So start with, say, the Marina, a conversation in June.
Okay. Or real estate, I mean, either one, whatever.
I would vote Marine. That's, it's always been one of my concerns.
Me too.
Okay.
Start with one deep dive.
And then if it if it works.
Accounting everything, the new method, I think that's going to be really important. I mean, I'm sure it's pretty similar accounting of everything, but I know she mentioned some and other parts of things that I think she's incorporating that weren't necessarily part of tabs.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and there's some, yeah, there there's some what I would think would be kind of simple things that we can address too, is just understanding, you know, when we're planning and going into the budget season again and we're looking and we've still, you know, we we'd like to have a five-year plan at some point. Uh, one of the things that would really be helpful is a depreciation schedule. That's, uh, because understanding, understanding the operations and how the operations actually whether they're profitable or not. The G N A and the depreciation has a lot to do with the bottom line now. So let's, let's understand how we if the operations, if your gross profit is is a positive and a, and a good positive. Uh, but it's, but you're dragged down by depreciation and and G N A. Let's understand when that depreciation drops off. And then, you know, we can, we can make adjustments from there.
And we've been told James was working on that. He told us last summer he was starting to.
Yeah, James and now Brent is working on it as well. I mean, some of it is just getting a good handle on all of our fixed assets, because we've, yeah, there's a lot. And I think there are things that may have been depreciating that we don't even own any, that kind of thing. So we're working on that.
And I hear you. So I think the other thing, Commissioner Iall, from what I'm hearing, I think we should schedule their briefing on where they're at so that I know we're working on it and we'll understand what are the knowns and what we're still trying to to excavate. But but we, it's been a year and having an update on where they're at would be helpful.
Okay, so why don't we look at?
Where they're at and what they feel their needs are.
No, what, why, what, how did we get, why are we stuck?
So, um, that sounds good. So Marina and then looking at sort of assets. I think also looking at what our maintenance plan is as well, because I think the Marina is also potentially a fascinating conversation because
That's why we need. Insane. We have to have this comment. I have informed my willingness to use a developer.
Right. And the, yeah, the ticket for replacing docks is.
It's insane.
It's like, yes, so we'll do that. Excellent. I appreciate that. Um, so just wanted to get, I know we're running. Um, so I definitely want to do an open house and a Q and A, like a half day for folks who are candidates for Port Commission who are interested in learning more about the port. And so I wanted to see, are any commissioners in, interested in being part of the Q and A session? Because we'll try to make sure we schedule around you guys.
I would participate if it could be not a half day, like for the commission.
Right.
Just like a certain hour.
Something for.
And if other people want to participate, I don't have to, so no. If it's, is it a publicly noticed meeting?
It will be publicly noticed. Absolutely. Well, it'd be publicly noticed anyway, because I think, yeah, if anybody else wants to come.
I defer to you on what we think creates the best healthy conversation.
Uh, all right. And then the last one is, um, we've been talking about with the P O C A C, having a joint P O C A C mission meeting. Are commissioners available to attend the June P O C A C meeting, June seventeenth, five P M? No. Are you?
I'm not.
Again. Okay. Well, what, why don't we have as many commissioners as possible attend? And yeah, I think we're gonna chat tomorrow with the P O C A C at their meeting tomorrow night about that and how to play for it, but, okay. Uh, and then the only other thing I would ask is I know we want to do a work session on environmental policies. Sounds like June is going to be at least partly waterfront center for work session. If folks could just let me know whenever is convenient, when you would like to do a work session on environmental policies and sort of yeah, what you all would like to do, change, contribute to our environmental policies. And then if any commissioners want to do town halls and when you would want to do those, could you let us know and we'll get them set up for it?
I have a few questions. Can you repurpose part of one of the, one of, one of the two scheduled meetings for the work session on environmental policies?
We could, yeah.
It's something to consider.
You mean one of our regular meetings or a work session?
Yes, one of our, I think two meetings here. The ninth and the twenty-third.
Yes.
And also the work session, so. Just to consider depending on how much regular business we have.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Whether we can do that. Um, and then can you take a little input from folks here? If they have things they want to elevate for
Work sessions?
Addendas soon.
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, my main thing was the financials, I guess.
Okay.
Environment was my big one. What Alex and I had discussed was adding a section to our environmental policy that specifically commented climate change and how we're addressing that. So I'm listening to our hall as well to get some public feedback once we get that work session done.
You know, her.
Oh, I'm excited about the environmental policy piece.
Maybe we'll try to do that June ninth.
Okay. I have a request that I think it would be a good time to schedule an executive session on the performance of an employee for a check-in with the commission. And in that, Alex, it's our chance to give some feedback to you and also to kind of talk about some personnel. How how you as the manager are running personnel more broadly. So I request that to happen, ideally within the month of June.
Okay.
And maybe for prior to a commission meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that works well for executive session time.
Okay, prior to, or if there's a meeting where we only have one hour of content, we can step out into the exec session after.
Okay.
Could you, before we adjourn flag, I mean, as we look at June, which is coming up soon, do you, do you see anything in our pending area that that you're elevating? You know, as a quick, you mentioned one thing, which is the waterfront center will come back. What else do you see as a topic that we would be addressing in June?
I am not sure. I mean, I, I guess actually unless there's some stuff that comes up business-wise, I don't know that there's a ton unless, I know the P O C A C has been in and talking to the commission, but if we have the meeting, the joint meeting. Need or want to come to this mission meet. I don't, yeah, I don't think that there's anything else that's popping up.
Then, given that it's, that that maybe we can take June ninth for either the and for the environmental work session, since that's the most sort of crystallized piece that people have asked for.
Okay.
And I could, we could, Commissioner Sanders and I can talk to you about further scheduling.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the idea of using our meetings when we're light on workload for some of these topics.
Okay.
And I don't think any of us are uncomfortable with the level of formality on the dais versus here. So that's where it works best to get the work done.
Oh, I, yeah, I do love being able to come together like this for the work session part, but it seems possible for us to roll six tables back to the spot.
Okay.
There was one other update, but we'll catch it later. Well, are we set? I apologize for running a little bit late today. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.